While the Los Angeles metro area received a good amount of rain last month, the need for water conservation is still dire. That's why the L.A. Department of Water and Power is asking all customers to check their homes and businesses for water leaks. The utility says ways to check for leaks include placing a few drops of food coloring in the toilet tank, and checking if any color shows up in the bowl, and checking the garden hose and drip systems to ensure they are watertight. These easy-to-do fixes save water and save you on your water bill. Household leaks account for more than one trillion gallons of water wasted each year across the United States. Los Angeles's top budget adviser is recommending going to voters with a half-cent sales tax hike to pay for street and sidewalk repairs. The proposed hike would be for 15 years and raise about $4.5 billion for the Save Our Streets Plan, being pushed by councilmembers Joe Buscagino and Mitch Englander. The two say street maintenance had been underfunded from 1950s to until the 1990s, resulting in the deterioration of 8,700 miles of city streets. The full city council is scheduled to hear a public briefing on the plan on April 2nd. Oscar-winning actress Kate Winslet was honored with the 2,520th star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, just days before the release of her latest film, Divergent. Winslet's Divergent co-stars were on hand, as well as councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, who represents Hollywood, as Winslet reminisced about her career.
Titanic was 18 years ago, would you believe that? I had my 21st birthday on that film shoot. I'm 38 now. It's really, really wonderful to be here and to be given this award, this accolade.
Winslet made her film debut in the 1994 drama Heavenly Creatures about a notorious New Zealand murder. She won the Best Actress Oscar in 2009 for her role in The Reader. Winslet is also an Emmy and Grammy winner. And an Oscar-like ceremony for animal lovers honors those who've gone above and beyond the call to protect wildlife. Gil Reyes reports from the first annual Waggy Awards.
Not far from Dolby Theatre, the home of Oscar, is another award show celebrating Fido, as well as other creatures, great and small. The first annual Waggy Awards at the Roosevelt Hotel honors people making a difference in the animal kingdom, like the filmmakers behind the celebrated documentary Blackfish.
We just want to make an entertaining movie that could reach, you know, just anybody regarding the plight of the orca whale. So we were very surprised on the reaction.
Blackfish documents killer whale captivity in San Diego's SeaWorld and the deadly consequences.
There's this storyline hiding in plain sight, and you know, all of us went to SeaWorld. It's on everybody's bucket list, and so I wanted to make it for people like me, who went there, who took their kids there, thought it was this great thing, but wouldn't have ever done that had we known the truth.
Hollywood-area councilman Mitch O'Farrell is also honored for leading the charge to ban bull hooks in the city of L.A. Bull hooks are used to torment elephants for entertainment purposes.
Widely used in circuses and animal acts. It's a Victorian-era torture implement to help control elephants, and it really breaks their spirit.
The ban on bull hooks is expected to go into full effect in 2017. Proceeds from the Waggy Awards go to the Tail Waggers Foundation, a nonprofit group that's funding treatment and finding homes for strays in L.A.'s animal shelters. Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Other honorees include the nonprofit group Lifeline for Paws. The group raises money to fund medical treatments for sick and injured dogs. Most people are used to donating money or time for a good cause, but at this local event, Angelenos are giving the hair right off their heads. Rasha Goel explains.
Hair today, gone tomorrow. Now in its 11th year, the St. Baldrick's Head Shaving Event raised nearly $100,000 to help with children's cancer research.
The LAPD, the fire and police come together every year, and they raise funds to fight childhood cancer. Because kids lose their hair when they go through cancer, we actually shave our heads in solidarity.
At just 12-years-old, Sarah Cooper, daughter of LAPD Officer Miriam Cooper, cared enough about other children to support the cause.
I just think it was a good cause, and I don't care what other people say, so I just did it anyways.
And she got mom on board, too.
I told her she raised $3,000, and I would do it, too. So she got $4,000, and so I shaved my head with her.
St. Baldrick's has raised more than $100 million since 2005, when it was incorporated, for research on childhood cancer.
If you shave your head, it'll grow back half an inch a month, and you'll have your hair back in no time, but you're gonna be saving a life out there, so it's an important cause.
A donation that is priceless. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Firefighters, police officers, and military troops have been a big part of the St. Baldrick's Foundation from the very beginning. In this week's list of things to do, an exhibit all about our subconscious, a cleanup event in Silver Lake, and a book fest downtown. 1111, a creative collective's traveling gallery, is hosting an exhibit titled "In Dreams." The group exhibition highlights and celebrates dream states and the subconscious as creative forces. Heavily influenced by both surrealist and pop surrealist themes, this exhibit will feature over 30 Los Angeles-based artists. The "In Dreams" exhibit opening night will take place on Friday, March 28th, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., and run through April 13th at the 1111 A Creative Collective Traveling Gallery, located at 18640 Ventura Boulevard in Tarzana. 1111 A Creative Collective's vision is to help the San Fernando Valley become a strong and independent artistic community. Visit 1111acc.org. And there's no shortage of cleanup events throughout the city this weekend. One of them is being hosted by councilmember Mitch O'Farrell's office. All are invited to join business and community leaders in cleaning up Silver Lake. It's also a good way to meet neighbors and learn about city services. Meet on Saturday, March 29th, at 9:30 a.m. at 601 North Silver Lake Boulevard. The cleanup goes until noon. For more details, call community organizer Silvan de la Cruz at 323-957-4500. It's a busy Saturday because right after the Silver Lake cleanup, you can head right over to Grand Park downtown. That's because Grand Park will be the place to see, hear, and read from the largest coalition of Los Angeles-based authors and publishers on Saturday, March 29th, from noon to 5:00 p.m. You'll be able to shop the local pop-up bookshop, meet librarians from the Los Angeles Public Library System, and even let your fingers do the talking on good old-fashioned typewriters. Grand Park is located at 200 North Grand Avenue downtown. Go to grandparkla.org for information. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. The Irish Fair Foundation has selected its Irishman and Irishwoman of the Year. Gil Reyes reports from the Sealy Observance in celebration of St. Patrick's Day.
It's an annual Irish tradition at City Hall. The Irish Day civic ceremonies are hosted by councilmember Tom LaBanche. Congratulations go out to popular Irish-American tenor Dennis McNeil, who's named 2014's Irishman of the Year. 2014's Irishwoman of the Year is Margaret Cleary. Considered to be the First Lady of Irish Step Dancing, here's a sample.
Irish, we know how to get things done.
Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell and city attorney Mike Fuhr, recognizing all the other honorees.
My chief deputy, Jim Clark, is a recipient of a very special award today. I just wanted to be here for a moment to recognize Jim.
Before moving the party outdoors three days later for the St. Patrick's Day parade in downtown.
We've got a special Los Angeles pipe band, memorial band of the LAPD. We're here with the Fire Department, it's Captain Jamie Moore. Hey, Jamie. We'd like to wish everyone in Los Angeles a happy St. Patrick's Day.
And at the end of the rainbow at Pershing Square, a lucky day for sure with no major problems to report. People celebrated wearing green wigs, green sneakers, there was even a fountain of green water flowing. Irish pride flying high. In downtown L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Craig Erwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Erwin, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Power City Heart Channel.
Mr. President, members, I just want to introduce Serena Friss, the past great general manager. Welcome.
Firefighters, police officers, and military troops have been a big part of the St. Baldrick's Foundation from the very beginning. In this week's list of things to do, an exhibit all about our subconscious, a cleanup event in Silver Lake, and a book fest downtown. 1111, a creative collective's traveling gallery, is hosting an exhibit titled "In Dreams." The group exhibition highlights and celebrates dream states and the subconscious as creative forces. Heavily influenced by both surrealist and pop surrealist themes, this exhibit will feature over 30 Los Angeles-based artists. The "In Dreams" exhibit opening night will take place on Friday, March 28th, from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m., and run through April 13th at the 1111 A Creative Collective Traveling Gallery, located at 18640 Ventura Boulevard in Tarzana. 1111 A Creative Collective's vision is to help the San Fernando Valley become a strong and independent artistic community. Visit 1111acc.org. And there's no shortage of cleanup events throughout the city this weekend. One of them is being hosted by councilmember Mitch O'Farrell's office. All are invited to join business and community leaders in cleaning up Silver Lake. It's also a good way to meet neighbors and learn about city services. Meet on Saturday, March 29th, at 9:30 a.m. at 601 North Silver Lake Boulevard. The cleanup goes until noon. For more details, call community organizer Silvan de la Cruz at 323-957-4500. It's a busy Saturday because right after the Silver Lake cleanup, you can head right over to Grand Park downtown. That's because Grand Park will be the place to see, hear, and read from the largest coalition of Los Angeles-based authors and publishers on Saturday, March 29th, from noon to 5:00 p.m. You'll be able to shop the local pop-up bookshop, meet librarians from the Los Angeles Public Library System, and even let your fingers do the talking on good old-fashioned typewriters. Grand Park is located at 200 North Grand Avenue downtown. Go to grandparkla.org for information. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. The Irish Fair Foundation has selected its Irishman and Irishwoman of the Year. Gil Reyes reports from the Sealy Observance in celebration of St. Patrick's Day.
It's an annual Irish tradition at City Hall. The Irish Day civic ceremonies are hosted by councilmember Tom LaBanche. Congratulations go out to popular Irish-American tenor Dennis McNeil, who's named 2014's Irishman of the Year. 2014's Irishwoman of the Year is Margaret Cleary. Considered to be the First Lady of Irish Step Dancing, here's a sample. Counselmember Mitch O'Farrell and city attorney Mike Fuhr, recognizing all the other honorees.
My chief deputy, Jim Clark, is a recipient of a very special award today. I just wanted to be here for a moment to recognize Jim.
Before moving the party outdoors three days later for the St. Patrick's Day parade in downtown.
We've got a special Los Angeles pipe band, memorial band of the LAPD. We're here with the Fire Department, it's Captain Jamie Moore. Hey, Jamie. We'd like to wish everyone in Los Angeles a happy St. Patrick's Day.
And at the end of the rainbow at Pershing Square, a lucky day for sure with no major problems to report. People celebrated wearing green wigs, green sneakers, there was even a fountain of green water flowing. Irish pride flying high. In downtown L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.[1208.99]
Okay, Alan. Good morning, it's Friday, March 28th. My grandson's birthday, I want to welcome all of you to your Los Angeles City Council. Mr. Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Could you call the roll, please?
Bloomingfield, Bonneville, Buscagno, City Hall, Interfuentes, Weezer, Corret, La Bons, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Westin, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Weezer moves, Corret, seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bloomingfield moves, O'Farrell, second. That leads us where?
Item number one, sir, it's an item notice for public hearing and we do have cards on that matter.
Okay, so let's move on to the next item.
Very good, sir, item two is an item for which a public hearing has been held, however, it should be held on the desk until such time as the Public Safety Committee report can be circulated.
No problem, so let's continue to move through the agenda.
Very good, sir, items three through eight are items for which public hearings have not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Sir, we have cards on all items, three through eight.
Then let's hold them, and that takes us where?
That brings us to item number nine on the continuation agenda, it's an item for which a public hearing has not been held, and again, ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, we'll have that item before us. Do we have cards on that item?
Sir, yes, we do.
Okay, so that completes the agenda, or is there more?
Mr. President, the committee report for item number two has now been circulated and is before council for consideration, if you'd like to take it up.
Okay, thank you for that recommendation, let's prepare to vote on item two, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, does that bring us to presentations?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Parks?
And pardon me, sir, item number two does contain an ordinance and unless reconsidered later with twelve members, we'll go over one week.
Well, I'm depending on you to make sure I don't forget, all right?
Very good, sir.
Okay, now I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Parks for a presentation.
Thank you very much.
In fact, Mr. Parks, just one second. Alan, we have twelve, why don't we vote on that ordinance? So let's vote for reconsideration, what item was that?
That was item number two, sir.
Okay, let's open the roll, this is for reconsideration. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now let's actually vote on the item, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Parks, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, today we're honoring a very special guest, someone we met with a couple of months ago, and her background and the things that she's accomplishing in her community have been significant. Now I asked Linda L. Smith to come up at this time, our honoree for our Women's History Month. Today, we're here to recognize Linda L. Smith as the Eighth District Honoree for the Women's History Month. Linda has been a registered nurse for thirty-eight years. By combining her love of nursing, high standards in healthcare professionalism, and a deep spiritual faith, she has founded the first and only African-American-owned, fully accredited vocational career college in California licensed to teach vocational nursing and other allied healthcare programs. Four D College is a faith-based and prayer is observed, the beginning and ending of each class and clinical session. In September 1992, Four D College enrolled two students in its first class, and currently more than fifteen thousand students have been enrolled seeking education in careers and healthcare field after completing courses in a variety of programs. Three courses are offered through the Continuing Education Department with an annual enrollment of approximately three hundred students. In 2010, Four D College was approved to offer the Associate Degree in Healthcare Administration. Linda helped students by having a licensed childcare center for their children for twelve years. Another benefit students enjoy is the student services representative that they can meet with to help work out various personal and school concerns. Also provided to students are tutoring, a student council, and various agency referrals. Four D College has been honored as the outstanding business in San Bernardino County by the Private Industry Council, as well as Outstanding School of the Year by the City of San Bernardino. Linda was selected as a Business Person of the Year by the San Bernardino African-American Chamber, received the Woman Achievement Award in the Elizabeth S. Jen Lifetime Achievement Award for the West End Inland Empire YWCA. Four D College has also won the African-American Inland Empire Chamber Business of the Year Award. She has continually been honored by small and large groups alike. In 2013, she was appointed the Board of Trustees for Loma Linda Ronald McDonald House. Linda is always seeking and implementing methods for keeping Four D College flourishing, progressive, and thriving. In addition to the Colton campus, she proudly opened the first hands-on vocational healthcare college in the high desert in the city of Victorville and continues to successfully operate two Four D College campuses. She recently wrote Love Letters to the Lord, a three-volume book set that spans the early years of Four D College from 1991 up through 2000. She allows the reader a glimpse into her world and hopes that the reader will be so inspired by her life's journey that they too will be inclined to find a void and fill it with serving humanity. Linda has also co-authored Conversations of Courage: Creating Values Through People, Discussions with Talent Leaders, and ZO Life Devotionals, released in 2012 and 13. Currently, she provides speaking services to a diverse business group, faith groups, and women-based groups. Her transparency and honesty is moving and uplifting the audience. Today, on behalf of the City of LA, it's my great pleasure to honor Linda L. Smith during Women's History Month and commend her on her recognition and valuable contribution throughout the community. We're gonna have Linda make some comments, she probably has the largest contingent of supporters that we've ever had in the council.
As always, first, I always give honor to God, and I am so thankful to have the opportunity to be here. Thank you, Councilwoman Parks, for this, and your colleagues for this wonderful honor, I'm just so moved by it. And I wish to thank, and I haven't seen her Cynthia Busby for the opportunity that she introduced me to Councilwoman Parks. I simply want to say that Four D College has been a true blessing to us who work there because we do have the opportunity to make a difference in the lives of these students who select to come to us. And I always, at two minutes, I would just always want to share that Four D College started as a result of a prayer that I submitted to God, asking that he allow me to make a difference in someone's life using my skills as a nurse. And on July 31st, 1991, at 1:05 a.m., I was called by name, and I rose and I had a wonderful spiritual experience and conversation. The outcome of that, because I don't have time to tell you this unbelievable journey, was that I did resign from a position that I had as a Director of Quality Assurance for twelve hospitals. And I set out during the journey of establishing a school. And within a year, I was able to establish Four D with two students, and we have been blessed to be in business now for twenty-two years. And our goal is to continue to provide quality healthcare education to individuals and to strive to do our very best to assist them in entering into employment. And so I want to say thank you again to Councilwoman Parks and to all of the support from the staff and friends and loved ones here from the Inland Empire and Four D College. I thank you so much for your time and support, for coming out to support me and the work that I do, and for being present as I receive this wonderful honor. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, congratulations.
And this wonderful gentleman standing here, who I always have to say, "Come closer", is my husband, Ernail, and I'm blessed with him. Soon, we'll be sharing thirty-nine years together in marriage, and that's right. And thank you so much.
Let's give her a big hand for the great work she does, for the great work as a school educator, Ms. Smith, congratulations. Mr. Buscagno?
I can ask Mr. O'Farrell to join us in celebrating Mark Mariscal. Come on up, Mark, and your friends. Thank you, we're joined by Paula, Mark's wife, as well. Thank you, Paula, for allowing him to serve the city of Los Angeles, it takes a team. And also, Mr. O'Farrell is on his way up. Colleagues, please join myself and Mr. O'Farrell in celebrating the election of Mr. Mark Mariscal as a 2014-2015 President of the California Park and Recreation Society. Mr. President, we're so proud of you, Mark. Let me tell you a little bit about the society, then I'll go turn it over to my colleague, Mr. O'Farrell, for some more insight and acknowledgements. The California Park and Recreation Society started in 1946 to bring together park and recreation professionals and agencies for networking and training opportunities. The city of Los Angeles was instrumental in helping start this organization. Today, there are over five hundred park and recreation agencies in the state of California, and tens of thousands of people that work in the field of public and private recreation. The CPRS works to make communities better and also promotes health and wellness in improving parks all over the state of California. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. O'Farrell for some introductions.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Buscagno, and Mr. Chair, colleagues. Many of you know Mark, who serves as the Superintendent of Operations Pacific Region for the Department of Rec and Parks. He has, for over thirty years, been full-time with the department, starting as a part-time recreation assistant back in 1978. And his institutional knowledge of the department actually surpasses that of Tom La Bange. Okay, just want to make sure you're listening. And the department is so much better off for the experience of Mark Mariscal, and I just got to tell you, in my experience in this profession, when I was on the staff of my predecessor, I worked so closely with Mark Mariscal on so many issues, and he's always been such a pleasure to work with. And especially, one of the highlights was back in 2005, when we brought the senior center over to Glassell Park. Mark, you were instrumental in helping make that happen, and that was one of the latest senior centers created through the Rec and Parks Department. And, Mark, you were just instrumental for that, so it's a great pleasure for me to be standing here today as a council member now, and sort of giving you that pat on the back because you certainly deserve it, and you really are a treasure in the city of LA. Mark, congratulations, and everyone loves you very much, thank you.
We love, we love Mark's energy. In CD-15, we've been blessed with an opportunity to break ground and cut the ribbon on a number of pocket parks. And thanks to our leader in this department, Recreation and Parks, Mike Scholl, for his dedication not only to my district but the entire city of Los Angeles. Please help me welcome the General Manager of the Department of Recreation and Parks, Mike Scholl.
Thank you, councilmembers. First of all, it's really important that we, as a city, are involved with organizations like the California Recreation and Parks Society, not only for benchmarking and figuring out best management practices across our state, but also the nation. Cannot think of a better person than Mark Mariscal to lead that effort, and we're so very proud of him. I want to introduce a couple of people that are here today to support Mark, we have Lynn Alvarez, our Board President, is here. I know Russ Guinea, the Director of County Parks, is here. And as you can see, the many staff that support our department are all here, we're all very, very proud of Mark, and it is really a big honor to run and be president of an organization that really sets the tone for the Recreation and Parks, not just the state, but nationally as well, so thank you very much, very honored to be here today.
And it's evident that Mark Mariscal is beloved in the department and the entire state of California, as evidenced in the amount of people who are here to support Mark, and we just love his energy. Passion is priceless across the city in what you do, regardless of what department you work for, but it clearly shows in Mark's dedication, love of recreation. Anywhere you go, his energy is amazing, and we need that, we need that energy across city lines. So I want to thank you, Mark, and before we bring you up, we want to present to you a resolution congratulating you on behalf of the entire city family as a president of the California Park and Recreation Society, Mark Mariscal. Please help me welcome Mike Mariscal, President.
Mark Mariscal is brother's Mike. Thank you, Councilmember La Bange, he does know my brother's Mike down at Alvera Street. But I would like to, first of all, say my wife, Paula, is here, which is always a pleasure to have my wife here. Our children went to school with Dion, our nice city attorney sitting up there, St. Elizabeth School up in Altadena, all those great things, but not only do we have Rec and Park people behind me, but we've got Heart of LA back here, we've got LA84 Foundation, we've got Society of San Vincent and Paul, we've got Cabrillo Marine Aquarium, we've got LA5 Rotary Club, we've got the Harbor Department back here, oh my goodness, maritime, we've just got a lot of different people. I said Ola, Heart of LA, and I've just got to tell you that, again, this is really about what LA leads, as Mike said, making sure that people know what's going on throughout the state, the work that we do with the National Recreation and Park Association as a city. The city of LA has been very active, we've had two general managers, I mean, we had two other people be Service President in the seventy years, one of them is a former General Manager, George Jelte, served as President of this great society, so I'm very honored to be able to do that. And of course, to have Mitch and Joe really say a few words on behalf of many of the councilmembers here, and of course, the previous councilmembers we've had. Just my phone conversation with Councilmember Parks last night about some issues that we're doing, it's really important that what I'm doing as President is just a volunteer position, but I really do it for the city of LA to be represented across the state, thank you.
All right, Mark. Joe, Joseph, before you get away, Mark, you look around, you turn around, Mark, you have the power of Los Angeles Parks right there. Good job, Mark. And we're fortunate in the state of California with a great county park system, which does, give Russ and his team a great hand again. Farnsworth Park, that's where you grew up on. But also, the issues that are this tight dollar that we have throughout the state, but to connect the urban Los Angeles to the Sierras, to Yosemite, to Mount Sesta, to all points, to Point Reyes in between. You know it, Mark, you put your hands out and you bring people together from Joe Solis all the way up to Kevin Reagan and all the people in between, and where again is Serena? Where's Serena? I don't see Serena, right there Serena. I just want to thank you, this is the epitome of a great public employee, a great Recreation and Parks specialist, and also I want to thank Mike Scholl for his great work and leadership, and John Muckrey in the past, but also Mike Scholl right now in leading this department and allowing you that extra time to represent Los Angeles well, with the blessing of our city attorney, Ms. Brimbley. Thank you, good job, Mark Mariscal. Now, we are honored to have the great Councilman of the Fourth D District honoring a very special company with their centennial celebration here. Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And as we walk up here, I just wanted to give a huge congratulations to an engineering company that has been doing work on building our infrastructure here in the United States and beyond for a hundred years, and let's give a big round of applause to HNTB, congratulations. For a hundred years, the HNTB and its committed organization has been involved with engineering, architecture, and planning that have recognized that infrastructure is important to this country as we move forward with improving our economy and making life better for all of us. Founded in 1914, they built a solid reputation for excellence and innovation, serving as the planner, designer, and construction manager for eleven billion dollars in infrastructure annually. They deliver infrastructure solutions to the most complex transportation projects, including highways and toll facilities, bridges and structures, rail and transit, environmental construction services, and aviation. In a recent national survey of public infrastructure owners, HNTB was ranked as the leading US design firm. Additionally, HNTB is the number-one consultant to transportation departments and toll authorities throughout the United States, serving the nation's largest airports and transit authorities, and is the industry leader in planning, design, and construction of long-span and movable bridges, as they employ more than three thousand six hundred professionals in more than seventy offices nationwide. Here at home, their longstanding history dates back to 1914 with the Arroyo Seco Viaduct Bridge. Bridge in Pasadena. And since then, they have played a role in many major local infrastructure projects, including the Burbank Regional Intermodal Transportation Center Station, the I-405 Sepulveda Pass widening, the Tom Bradley, get this, Mr. Labange, the Tom Bradley International Terminal Expansion, the design of USC Galen Center, and John McKay Center, as a Golden Bear, we'll excuse him for that, modernization of East Los Angeles Community College Football and Soccer Stadium, and the list goes on and on and on. But for us, in Council District 14, we were excited that in 2012, HNTB was announced the winner of the international design competition that we had to design, redesign the historic eighty-year-old Sixth Street Bridge in Los Angeles. The decision to launch the competition came after engineers warned that the bridge was at risk of failing during a major earthquake due to a degenerative structural problem known as concrete cancer. After careful consideration and entertaining the idea of constructing a replica of the 1932 icon, the city committed to moving forward with a major redesign. HNTB beat out various leading engineering firms to take on this major project. Their firm's proposed design pays respect to the original bridge and serves as an iconic gateway to Ball Heights and downtown Los Angeles. As you can see, HNTB has a long-respected history in their profession nationally and here in Los Angeles, and I'm happy to be here today with them to celebrate a hundred years. At this time, I would like to present HNTB with a resolution commemorating a hundred years of infrastructure solutions. And accepting on their behalf will be Ed McSpedden, Board of Directors and Executive Vice President, and Tony Gonzalez, the HNTB Vice President of Western Division and Architectural Practice Lead. And they will also introduce to us who they have brought along today. So, thank you very much. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, thank you for your contributions to improving our infrastructure, and also, congratulations for a hundred years of service to this great country. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Let's give them a round of applause, please.
And Ed, you're going to speak, right?
Yes.
Want to compliment them. Look at the camera, don't look into me. The great work that they're going to do on the Sixth Street Bridge is going to be a remarkable gateway to connect Los Angeles over the river. Mr. Weezer, your leadership is tremendous on that, but the thoughts that got together to say, "We're going to copy the, what they do with the Sydney Bridge," where you can walk over the top of the bridge in such a way in the connection. Congratulations to all of you. Send a note to your architectural teachers in college and your draft teachers thanking you, because they got you here. Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And indeed, we realized we were going to replace an iconic structure here in the city of L.A. We did an international competition to try to get, to get the best design we could possibly have. And the result they came back with is not only getting people from point A to point B, but actually, they created a point C in the middle for people to be able to spend some time on the bridge with the beautiful views. And also, they have some loops that come in and out that will allow people to go through the bridge, but also come down in many points of the bridge to enjoy the river below that we are now currently revitalizing. So it's a great design.
The military, the veterans at Boyle, right before the bridge. That worked too. I'm going to help you on that.
We're going to work on that. Thank you very much. And now, Ed McSpedden, thank you. Welcome, Ed.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you. And, you know, the teachers, many of our professionals were taught right here at USC, UCLA, and upstate as well.
Berkeley.
Yeah, Berkeley, where we just completed the renovation of their football stadium this past year. Right, so.
Can you renovate the football team themselves?
That was, that's someone else's job. We're just on the infrastructure. In addition to Tony Gonzalez, who was mentioned, I want to introduce Abigail Sanchez and Julia Derrick, who are part of our L.A. team. On behalf of the 3,500 professional employees of HNTB, we would like to thank you, Councilman Weezer, and you council members for this very special recognition today. We look forward to the opportunity to continue to work with each of you, our elected leadership, to help tackle the enormous infrastructure challenges that are so critical to the economic vitality and to the quality of life for all who live, who work, and who visit this great city. The significance of this challenge is what motivates us every day. Thank you for your recognition.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And it's often been noted, and I know Councilmember Blumenfield has been doing some work on this in the state Capitol, as well as here, that the, our country must do more to address our decaying infrastructure. It affects our commerce, our ability to continue our economic vitality, and we want to thank HNTB for their work and what they're doing to contribute to our, improving our infrastructure throughout the country. Congratulations again. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Weezer. Okay, Mr. Clerk, that concludes our presentation portion of today's council meeting. Why don't we begin addressing the items on the agenda, beginning with item number three, which is Wana Kala, item three. And Mr. Walsh.
I wish to speak only one minute since, I haven't made up my mind whether this is a worthy item or not. I'm making it, right now in my mind, I'm making up my mind, let me see.
We'll speak to the item.
Communication from the mayor relative to the appointment and reappointment of members of the workforce investment board. What do they do? Is it worth it? Form ending through June thirtieth. I don't even know what they do. What do they do? Can you explain? Okay, only one minute.
Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com, or immediately come and watch me tweet at Hollywood Dems. This concerns the appointments and reappointments of members of the WIB, the Workforce Investment Board. Well, I can tell you what they do. They invest your money in politically favored investees. And the mayor is getting rid of, weeding out all of Antonio's appointments, so his appointments will vote for the favored ones. And incidentally, as you notice here, the names are not, I've never been here, I've been here since 1980s, I've never been here where you appoint to someone anonymously. There's nothing in, on the agenda, the names of these people. And when they do that, they mean, it means they want to be really secret about this. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. No speakers on the cue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Mr. Clerk, did you take my item one? I've got it. Let's go to item one.
Mr. President, there's been a request to continue that matter until April 11. Again, that would be two, excuse me, two weeks, April 11.
Okay, so, Mr. City Attorney, do we still take the comment, even though the item's being continued? Okay, so then, we will follow the suggestion then of the member of the district and continue that item? So for those of you that are here on that item, that item has been continued for two weeks, and that date, Mr. Clerk, is?
April 11, sir.
Okay, and that's when it will resurface on our agenda. So let's move to item four. I have cards on that. I have Wana Kala. Mr. Kala? If someone could, are you here on one? If we could have somebody from Mr. Price's office talk to her on the side, if you were here on item one? Yeah, well, I just have her understand what's going on. Okay, Mr. Kala, item four, followed by Mr. Walsh.
Well, she didn't know what she was doing.
No, that's not the item, so you speak to the item.
Okay. I was, item number four, rent escrow. Here is an item in which no city should be involved in telling the citizens what and what not to do, because the city has crooked inspectors that come and levy big fines on people for, "Oh, you got too much grass on your sidewalk." Well, that's going to be $40,000. You got, you got a tree that's a little bit taller than the city trees, so you're going to have to pay through the ass.
Mr. President, he's not talking about the REAP.
Yes, the REAP. Look, these guys complied with your wishes and they're getting removed from your collection agency, okay? They're giving them their properties back, saying, "You did okay. You're okay. You're okay." In other words, you're, you're getting into people's business, and you shouldn't be. The people elect you to create things that are helpful for everybody. They don't, they don't elect you to just rip everybody off.
Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or tweeting right now at Hollywood Dems, use a capital H. The first time I was more or less of a tenant, although the, I was at UCLA and the U.S. government was paying my rent, was June of 1966, if I had recall. So I have a long history of being a tenant, in almost a half a century. And L.A. is generally good to tenants compared to the scumbags up in, say, San Francisco. And I wish they would put a program like this, REAP, here in San Francisco, but up there, everything is controlled by the Chinese drug tanks.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, quickly, Mr. Clerk, I need to vote. We need a vote on reconsideration of item one. We want to adjust the date of the continuance, so let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
And it's my understanding that the date that it will be back here is now, is it April 8?
That is correct, sir, April 8.
Okay, so that'll be the order. Let's go to item five.
That's item five, called Special for Cards.
Okay, we have Wana Kala, followed by Mr. Walsh.
This item, I wish to speak one minute, but it's really important, because motion, Buscaino, Brown, and Weezer, relative to the funding efforts of the Venice Japanese-American Memorial Marker. Can we create a memorial marker for all the homeless people that died in Venice? That would be more important, you know? In the time I've been in Venice, okay, the Japanese, some of them were Japanese, okay? Let's create a memorial to the Japanese and the homeless Japanese that died in Venice because of lack of everything, which essentially, you don't know what to do about the homeless problem. I know what to do, but you don't listen to me. I spoke one minute. Let the Japanese go back.
Mr. Walsh, followed by Antonio Ramirez.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. We're all in favor of this memorial marker, and you might also add a memorial marker over here for your little trolley where, that goes up and down the hill.
Let's stay on the item.
And it is concerning memorial marker. But the Japanese-Americans, yes, they were sent to concentration camps. Well, you know what? That was before the Brown Act. That was before people like me had a chance to get up and blow the whistle. They didn't have the Brown Act when the Japanese were interred. Mr. Brown himself was in his late twenties. The point I'm making here is, to ensure democracy, you need something like this, public comment. As much as you discourage us, the Japanese might not have ended up in concentration camps if we'd had public comment back in the 40s. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Antonio Ramirez, followed by Mr. Herman.
Thank you. I am shocked and horrified. Councilmembers Buscaino, Bonin, and Weezer should be hung for doing the city a great disservice. We are only allocating $5,000 to the Venice Japanese-American Memorial Marker. They deserve more than that. The Japanese people and the Japanese-American veterans have greatly contributed and enhanced America with their aesthetic beauty, i.e. flower arrangements, tea ceremony, calligraphy, fencing, and martial arts, and their high standards of decorum and civility and nonviolence, their brilliant high-tech scientific developments, agricultural, marine biology, space, and environmental, and medical contributions to the world. And it is all rooted in the commitment to the deep and fervent honor and respect like the Shogun and Samurai, which is the basis of their mystical, delicate, and profound religious enlightenment stemming from Zen Buddhism and Shinto. And through this way of life, they are healthy, happy, and so beautiful and whole and complete, for they regard life with sacred reverence and purity. Please watch the movie Farewell to Manzanar. So shara, Nippon, Nihon, Nippon, watashi wa anata o aishiteimasu. Amerika mo aishiteimasu. Tomarigato gozaimasu. Shi-shitsure shimasu. Thank you.
Mr. Herman.
I can't top that. I can't top that. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. We're talking here on the efforts of the Venice Japanese-American Memorial Marker. And John Walsh, again, is correct. If it was not for 54950 of the Brown Act, no one in Los Angeles, any one of us, would not have the opportunity to make our recommendations for the Venice Japanese-American Memorial. You deserve a round of applause for this. For once, I can say you've done something positive in Los Angeles. However, on the negative point, we still have to conduct business of the city. Business of the city to what? Allocate $5,000 for this Council District 11. Good thing it's not District 14, because we had a killing in Hollenback Lake, thanks to Mr. Weezer.
Now, stay on this subject.
Okay, let me redirect myself back to topic again. So the city clerk has prepared the necessary documents agreements with the Venice Community Housing Corp. Good thing it's not building in safety. Any other agency or organization as appropriate and the above amount for the above purpose. I say all yes. Let's make this a motion, and overruled. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, it's my understanding we do have a commissioner that's been waiting. What item is that? And do we have to temporarily stop the current meeting to go into that meeting, or what's the?
Yes, yes, sir. Would you like to recess the regular meeting and go into the special?
Yeah, so let's do that.
Very good, sir.
Call the roll.
Blumenfield, Bonnabu, Buscaino, City, Leonard Fuentes, Weezer, Caressco, Corin, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Weston, twelve members present. In a quorum, Mr. President. Mr. President, that brings us to item number 10, and it's an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Okay, I'll defer to Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take a moment and acknowledge an outstanding volunteer and citizen in the city of Los Angeles. And I happen to be blessed, because he's also a constituent of the 13th District, an outstanding appointee to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission, Mr. Ricardo Berg.
How are you, sir? Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. You might want to tell us a little bit about yourself.
Good morning, Honorable Council President and Honorable Council Members. My name's Ricardo Berg. I've been a city volunteer activist for a long time and involved in local politics for the betterness of our community and the city as a whole. And I am here today, be glad to be on this commission, because we need to, first off, make sure every single sidewalk is accessible for the wheelchair people. And another idea would, I had was also that if it's cost-effective or depending on costs, is make every single, signal light in the city of Los Angeles with an alert tone for the blind people, similar to what you have next to the Braille Institute. And I feel very honored to be here today, speaking for you and the entire City Council.
Thanks, Ricardo.
Okay, Mr. Laban.
As Mr. O'Farrell said, an excellent commissioner with passion. And in committee, we spoke about sidewalks. We also spoke about working with the State Department of Disability to identify what zip code in Los Angeles has the highest number of people in needs and work from where the highest number of people in needs is. And so we look forward to working with you on that, wherever it is in the city of Los Angeles where there's challenged sidewalks, especially for those who are challenged and want to find a way to fix them faster. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. O'Farrell, as always, thank you and Mr. Garcetti for this great nominee.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell.
So colleagues, I ask for a unanimous I-vote on appointing Ricardo Berg to this important commission. There is, he has an unmatched can-do spirit and attitude. He's a volunteer. He's going to join me tomorrow morning in Silverlake. We're going to do a community walk, a friend, and I ask for your unanimous I-vote. Thank you, and thank you, Ricardo.
Thank you, Council Member. Now, again, thank you. Let's, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That passes. Congratulations, okay? Thank you. Mr. Clerk, maybe we should adjourn this meeting, return to the regular meeting?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, that takes council back to item number six, called Special for Cards.
Okay, let's do that. Item six, I have Mr. Sacks, followed by Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes, so it's all on you, Mr. Sacks.
I feel a heavy weight there, sir. Thank you. I think I can try and handle it. Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I actually held this item, and then I read it again, because I thought it was just the roof of a, of a city-owned roof, but it's a city-owned facility. So if it's a city-owned facility, why not have the city repair the roof? It's a city-owned facility, yet you're giving the money to the Latino Theater Reprogramming Company. And I really have nothing against the Latino Theater Programming Company or this or that, but it's a city-owned building. Why are they going to do the repairs on a city-owned building? Doesn't make sense. Who has the liability, then, if something happens to the ci? If there's an earthquake and the roof quite caves in, who has the liability? Well, the city didn't do the repairs, but the Latino community's theater group doesn't own the building. Who's on first? You have sidewalk repairs overtime. Why give the money to the group for the city-owned roof? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Let's prepare members to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, let's go to item eight, where I have Mr. Akala. Item eight, Mr. Akala. Mr. Walsh. Mr. Sacks.
I wish to speak one minute on this item since I'm just beginning to realize that it is an item. Motion Bloomingfield, Laban, relative to amending prior council action made and regarding accepting funds for Westfield LLC to cover the cost of expedited review of the striping and signal plan for the V per mid design work associated with the Village of Westfield Topanga Project. Recommendation for council amendment prior to, fifty thousand dollars to seventy-five thousand. Fifty thousand was not enough, evidently. Did I go over my minute? No, I haven't.
Your time has gone after this minute.
I got fourteen seconds, and I don't know what the hell I'm talking about.
So normally the case. Okay, Mr. Walsh.
Sarcasm is out of order.
No, look, you're out of order. Just speak to the item.
Then you don't make sarcasm.
You speak to the items. You speak to the item, Mr. Walsh.
Highlands.org, political prisoner at the microphone. Let me tell you what this is about. I do the research. I don't get up here and ask questions. I tell you. This Westfield Topanga project will be the largest mall in America. It will be gigantic. And just where we need more malls, right? In the Valley. The Valley's up to its ass in malls, okay? But, and who's paying for it? Capitalists? No! We're paying fifty thousand here, seventy-five thousand dollars there. I'm telling you, I have nothing. You want to fix the roof of a Latino theater? Fine. But if you want to give millions of dollars to these people, these out-of-state investors at this mall, no! We don't need any more malls. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Are you? Yeah, you're in the back. Come forward, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. Westfield, they're kind of like the AEG of the Valley and the airport. They got, you gave them a tax break, a incentive, tax incentive, to develop this property. The villages, and now you're turning, now they're going to turn around and anonymously give seventy-five thousand dollars for street, an extra twenty-five thousand dollars for the street striping and signal plan. Not the striping and signal plan. Again, with the intricacies of the language, that's just the plan. Does that include any of the actual striping and lighting work? The street light being put up? The striping of the city? The turns, the turn lanes and everything that's associated with that? Or again, it's just a plan? If it's just a plan, it's chump change. They're getting, how much are they, by the way, how much were they getting in tax incentives? Put off for, what, twenty years or thirty years so they could develop this mall property? And in the situation here, you look at Prop 13 and you say, the taxable property, the value of the taxed property will not go up because it's a corporation like this with not one majority owner. But the rents will be based on the value of the businesses that'll be located in the mall. And so you're going to get double jeopardy here. You get double jeopardy because they get added services, which they don't pay for, and they get added revenue based on projected, projected value of the businesses in the mall.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, let's try item seven now. Ms. Ramirez, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Herman.
Thank you very much. A motion by Buscaino and Weezer relative to funding the community beautification efforts in Council District Number 14. We say no, no, no. This expensive job of a hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars will only get vandalized, graffitied, defecated, urinated, trashed, and destroyed by the reptilian and civilized chango gangbangers and Latino criminal illegal felons. Incidentally, corrupted politico Gil Cedillo was on NPR on 3/11/14 regarding filthy neighborhood cleanup. That was the title, where they removed two hundred and fifty tons of waste products, which included mattresses, beds, and other Latino contaminants in the cochinero in Pico Union area and Lincoln Heights area. These Latino gangbangers and felons are a toxic noise and urban blight. We demand that they pony up the money. They, the gangbangers and the illegals, they want to live in this country, pay for all their trash. We, as law-abiding American citizens and taxpayers, will no longer be ponying up the money for their. Again, we are only subsidizing a proper community. Let's get rid of them or deport them, and no amnesty and no asylum. We are tired of putting out money where we have now our military veterans and our pilots living in the airports, parking lots, in or on the streets, homeless. Why are we supporting these illegals and gangbangers? And they are, again, committing crimes against American citizens and terrorizing us on a daily basis. I can't even go out of my own home without having somebody babysit my home because, again, breaking and entering. Again, Latinos, you ought to be ashamed of yourselves. Again, this Mexican-American will not put one money or penny for these illegals. I will put my money for my military veterans and my pilots, but I will not fund these illegals. Webones. I thank you very much. God bless America.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Herman, you want to come up now, followed by Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Peabody and Mr. Sherman, we have here a community beautification effort. A beautification effort, and for what? We continue to have debris, trash throughout CD 14. And if we're going to make any effort...
Hold Mr. Herman's time. Shhh. Thank you. Mr. Herman?
If there's going to be any effort, it first has to come from the ability of Mr. Weezer to actually do something with the clerk's funding. Any one of you in Los Angeles, you're all welcome to Boyle Heights. Not only do we got murders going on there, but you can come and see the chinchero of trash pretty much on every neighborhood. Every neighborhood has bulky item trash debris, period. So clean up your rack, Mr. Weezer, and get on, get on the board and do something about it. Thank you. One minute.
Mr. Walsh passes. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now we will go to item nine. Mr., Mr. Clerk and Sid Masoudian, Ms. Ramirez, Mr. Sacks, Mr. Walsh. Item nine. Ms. Ramirez, you can come right on. You don't have to wait.
Sorry.
Oh, and they informed me you have one minute.
Madam Clerk, could you pass these, please? Thank you. Motion by Buscaino and Weezer, who are fraudulently wastefully demanding sidewalk improvement programs to repair broken and buckled sidewalks within Council Number 14 again. And this is to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money. We say no, no, no. Let the gangbangers and the criminal illegal felons pony up the money, or better yet, take it out of the council members' own bank accounts. Buscaino, Cedillo, Alarcón, Fuentes, Weezer, and Mitchell Farrell, who gets offended. I sense some LA City accounting shenanigans, yet we are paying for city cheap labor and the total sum is still two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's criminal and wasteful spending. And again, ladies and gentlemen, action taken, deport, 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 and we won't have buckled sidewalks. We won't have broken, disrepaired streets, and we won't have vandalism to the property of Los Angeles. We won't have theft or violence, and we won't be subsidizing all these webones y webonas. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Sid, are you ready? Followed by Mr. Sacks, and then Mr. Walsh.
Good morning, Council Members. Regarding this matter...
Can we have some quiet in this chamber?
This is very important for every council member to hear and pay attention to what I got to say at this moment. Back in 2003, and the reason I say this because it says the street services, these funds will be diverted to street services and public works for this project. As you all know that I am working on a project where the street services had a tune of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars redone the alley back in 2003. As of today, there is no accountability of no plans, nothing on record. And I had a huge meeting just about a few days ago, almost at a tune of 1.2 million dollar worth of employees of this city sitting across from me at the DOT, Mr. Michael Kanter, Jay Kim. No one can give me accountability that this project was done where everything was done up to par. I hold in my hand documentations over here, which will be soon provided to all council members, that this street was done without any permits at a tune of 460 grand, which was a good deed done by Ms. Jan Perry, which she used to be in District 9 before, to dump that money into District 14 for a good cause. Yet, they mismanaged that construction, and today, when I'm trying to make that thing right, I've got another monkey wrench thrown into it at the end of my construction phase where Michael DeLijani, Shahram DeLijani...
Come on, Sid. Try to stay on this subject. Sid, hear me. Stay on this subject.
The subject matter, that this four hundred and sixty thousand dollars disappeared without any filings that was supposed to be done properly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sid. Arnold, come on down. Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman. You're out of time. Mr. Akala.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Arnold Sacks. Again, this clarts, C-L-A-R-T-S, funds. Keep in mind two things. This, again, is money that is not part of the city budget, but is money that is directed to the City Council District and ends up in the council offices. And keep in mind that this is not one-time funding, but this is funding that occurs to the city council offices every year. So when a councilman is in office for four years, he will get four years of this funding if it's available for his district. He will get four years of AB 1290 funding if it's available for his district. He will get four years of bus bench revenue if it's available for his district. He will get four years of landfill amenity funds if it's available to his district. We had Mr. Cedillo, when he first started, two months in office, spend a million dollars on cleaning up his district. What about the other fourteen council members? Well, they're on hold right now. But four years of this kind of funding. The other important item in this thing, first-line item, salaries overtime. The one thing any manager can control on any kind of project is the hours worked. That's the one item. You can't control the weather. You can't control a lot of different things, but the one tangible item you can control is overtime. And yet, this is what they pay most on. With the funding situation of the city, any director would tell their managers, whatever you do, control the overtime. And yet, in the city, whatever you do, pay the overtime. It is insanity that's become normal. You need to speak up. It's your money.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Walsh or Mr. Herman?
Angelinos, there's a time and a place that covers all activities of the state and local government, regardless of the government's entity and size. So this measly little fund of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars will not correct the sidewalk improvement that we need. We all need improvement in every street, sidewalk in our community. So what's the problem here? The problem has to do with a broken system of government, a broken system that you, as a city, failed to replace, alter, and fix public sidewalks and streets. And how dare you remove homeless people from a public sidewalk when they have nowhere to go and nowhere to be? But that's a different subject, right, Mr. Laban? But that's a different subject, right, Mr. Labonge? So my point and question to all of you in this horseshoe, like a spider with 15 eyes, when does the reality of all you wake up and see, what you've created? Programs that don't work. A broken system that does not work. And today, you, Mr. Bloomfield, have the nerve to say, "Oh, we're going to just ask for one..." Was it you? We're going to ask for what? $1 billion to fix streets and sidewalks? Well, first, get your report right. Maybe it was not you, but Mr. Bonin and Busciano, those of you who made that one-inch booklet for us to read, will go nowhere, because the bottom line is this. $250,000 is chump change to improve our sidewalks. And let me finish here reading that Title II requires that the state and the local government give people with disabilities an equal opportunity to benefit from sidewalks, program service, and activities. So use the resources the way you should instead of la-la gagging and wasting taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, Jay Walsh confidential tweeting @HollywoodDems. Oh, yeah, we're all in favor of repairing the broken and buckled sidewalk, especially for the homeless, because if it's repaired, it'll be nice and smooth. It'll be easier to sleep on. And we have more people sleeping on the sidewalks in the city of Los Angeles than any other city in America. Only Calcutta in India has more. We would like this project, this quarter-of-a-million-dollar project, to be reviewed by the city. We're asking for Ms. Godoy, who still works for the city, who is suing Mr. for sexual harassment.
Now, let's stay on the subject.
We're asking for Ms. Godoy to review this. She works for the city. She understands Mr. Weezer. This is, and she gets paid for it. I'm talking about this sidewalk improvement plan. Please, Ms. Godoy, improve it. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that takes council to general public comment for items not on today's agenda.
Okay, let's start out with Brian Barajas, followed by Ms. Ramirez, followed by Mr. Walsh.
All right. So today, I think I wanted to stick to a subject for everybody to consider. I think it comes to the point where if people want to live, and this goes back to a breakdown crisis that we're suffering in the mind. And this is the idea. If we want to live, if we want to exist, if we want a future, if we want to actually, I don't know, make history and be remembered, if this is our intent, and this goes for everybody, then the only way to get out of the situation that we're in is to actually face the fact that we are confronted with an existential crisis. Now, the existential crisis is the British Crown. Her, she is becoming extinct. And a lot of Americans, if they want to call themselves Americans, have to understand you are in a... You were made in the image of God. The United States, the United States is actually conceived of Americans who know that. Benjamin Franklin knew that. The first colonies in the 17th century knew that. Connor Mathers, they knew this. Increase Mathers, they knew this. They knew that we were facing a British or Roman Empire, but now it's British Empire, Queen Elizabeth. She is the individual causing nations to, and people...
He needs to bring this back into the...
Well, yeah, I'm coming back. Don't worry.
Okay.
So let me just bring this back, as the gentleman stated. When we say "coming back", we say we ground ourselves to the conception that man is created in the image of God. This is the Constitution. This is our role. So we need to consider that.
Thank you. So, Mr. Labonge?
Would you excuse me to my district? Former President Jimmy Carter is there in the community, and I want to give him all your regards.
I believe we can do that if I can.
And thank you. And also, would you announce to the public that we're honoring Hugh Howser's memory tomorrow at Chapman College at 10:00 a.m. in Orange? Thank you so much. Have a good weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Ms. Ramirez, Mr. Walsh, and Candido? Yes, go right ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, these Wilshire Westwood UCLA Corridor high-rise buildings are chronically noisy, unsafe, junky-infested, Latino gang-infested, and Iranian criminal rings involving fraudulent monopolies throughout the buildings and businesses on Wilshire Boulevard and UCLA area. The Wilshire Marquee High-rise is one example, located at 10535 Wilshire Boulevard, Los Angeles, California 90024. The following condo units are involved in drugs, harassment, gang stalking, pedophile, theft, voyeurism by implanting spyware in your home, invasion of your privacy, home invasion robbery, loud and persistent noises on a daily basis. They are units number 504, 605, 704, 1604, DEC 05, and the Pool Jacuzzi area. And their illegal gang-banging employees are Hector, Misael, Leonel, Louis, Jose, and Lesvin, along with Antenna and Ali, the full-service employees and pathological liars who tell you no one lives upstairs or downstairs. Hell, I don't know what country they're from. The homeowners association, Mrs. Leila Jackson, and the Non-Emergency Dispatch Center and the West LA Police Department have deliberately failed to cure any and all problems in these buildings. The West LA Police Department pinned the victims against these criminal parties by denying them equal protection under the law and giving preferential treatment to the criminals. So we say, "Fire, arrest Sergeants Walker, Abbott, Duke, Mark Durell, Chris Ragsdale, A. Bone, Officers K. McCarthy, Kirkland, Barone, Detective L. Smith, Detective Maston, Detective White, and Detective Keith Thomas, with no benefits and no pension benefits." And again, I recommend they watch this wonderful movie, Iron Lady, who says, "Take pride in your job." Again, Margaret Thatcher, may she rest in peace. She is one of my idols. God bless her.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Sacks, followed by Candido. And Mr. Akala, would you please sit down?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. At my website, there is a hilarious cartoon about public comment. A professional comic strip by a professional artist who came here. It's his version of what happens here. He was here and watched. Come to my website. I laughed so hard, I wet myself. HollywoodHighlands.org. I just want everyone out there to know, again, what I have said, and no one here says, "It is chaos at LAX Airport." You laughed and said it was psychotic ravings. They just arrested 24 people. For the past four or five years, everything has been rifled. Your luggage, if you came to Hollywood, was rifled. If you complained, it was thrown away. Your complaint. Millions and millions of dollars of tourist money were stolen. And it was only when FBI started talking about raiding the people who were luggage handlers that they did something about it. The LAX police are absolutely worthless. I just want everybody out there in America, I know you can't see my face. If you've ever been to LAX, remember, they don't even have video surveillance cameras to watch the people handling your luggage. That is how bad it is. Don't come to LA. Don't invest in LA. Stay away from LA. This is a death city on a death trip. Now, I want to say some good things about LA. At least you're not controlled by the Chinese Tong gun runners. And if you... I will say that for you. You're just good old-fashioned American criminals. You're not controlled by the Tongs the way they are in San Francisco. And if you want to see, on my website right now, a picture of Lieutenant Governor Gavin Newsom on his knees giving a blowjob to Shrimp Boy. HollywoodHighlands.org. You all ought to be ashamed of yourselves.
Mr. Sacks, Mr. Mares, followed by Sid. Come forward, Mr. Sacks. Go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. And you probably know from your experience and maybe reading the headlines or newspapers, there seems to be a problem with the fire department and its hiring personnel policies. And so I thought of a quick solution to this based on what's going on with DWP. Because I also believe in some of the newspapers they've discussed that DWP will be hiring more people that answer the phones and more people that read the meters. So why not use the DWP hiring formula to help the fire department? Because we know there's no nepotism, and there's no problems there with the DWP. Oh, wait, there are a few problems, but they're minor. We could sweep them under the rug. That $40 billion, $40 million? That's chump change. Consider again, while they were spending 40... Losing $40 million, they were getting $105 million a year, which is $1.5 billion. $1.05 billion that they were spending. And they still needed $40 million. So they're chasing after who-knows-what to make themselves look good. But the mayor says he's going to bring the DWP back to greatness. That's when they were having the $20,000 lunches back in the mid-'80s. Must be really funny, Mr. Parks. You know, since your time here on the chambers, you would think that you would have been able to do something with the DWP in your time as budget head. But now, the last time the new director was, you asked her to make implementation into new policies. I'd have thought you would have had that opportunity. I guess I'm wrong. But go ahead and keep laughing. But again, DWP policies for hiring the fire department.
Thanks, Arnold. Candido, followed by Sid Masoudian, followed by, I don't know if I'm pronouncing this right, Sarkis Agajanian? Okay, so you're third man up. Candido, good to see you.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Candido Maris, proud, proud resident of the 12th District and honored to be represented by Mr. Mitch Englinger, where things get done. And I also want to take this time, I know he's gotten a lot of criticism this morning, but I want to thank Mr. Weezer, because I called the office two days ago in regards to investment in that area. I'm not friends with Mr. Weezer. We don't have a relationship. But I love when we have council members who have great staff members. And Martin and Kevin were very kind, and I appreciate the kindness that you've shown. And again, I live in the greatest city and the greatest country in the world, Mr. President. This is the city of Los Angeles. And it hurts to hear people talk and knock it. I mean, we have problems. We have gang members. We have issues. But if we, if we, all we do is beat each other down, what do you think the rest of the world's going to think of us? So I hope that people start to change their attitude and start to think, "You know what? I'm blessed. I live in the great city of Los Angeles." Mr. President, I just want to thank you, Mary Garcetti and Mr. Galpern. There's a lot of changes that have taken place at the Department of Water. And for many, many years, I fought for those changes, transparency and accountability. But I want to make sure that we don't destroy the workforce within the Department of Water and Power. If you take a look around the world and around this country, we have disasters happening all the time. The one thing I can assure everyone here that when we have that disaster here, and when it does come, the people at DWP will perform, and we will all get our water and our power, and we will be safe. So I hope that we don't destroy them. I'm glad to see that I see a friend of mine, Jim Dantone. I was worried about you. I called your office five days, five times. I was ready to come out with medics to make sure you had a pulse. But I hope that we can get together, because I know we have a council meeting in the valley. Ms. Martinez, it's been a pleasure working with you. I hope that we can get Ms. Benavides honored, and we can also, Father Vito sends his love. He was concerned, because we are concerned about the signs. We're trying to improve our area. So again, Mr. President, I live in the greatest city, and God bless Mr. Cesar Chavez. I wish he could see that we're trying to move in the right direction.
Thank you. Thank you. No applause. No applause. Sid, followed by Sarkis, followed by Sifu Harrison. Yes?
Council members, it's regarding the San Vincent Court. I have disappointing news for you all. As you all know, I've been working on this project diligently for the past year and two months. I was almost close to my third review. Just about a month ago, Michael DeLijani, Shahram DeLijani, and District 14 representatives threw the monkey wrench to put a halt on my project. A week ago, not even a week ago, about three days ago, I was at the DOT, sitting down with all the representative of all departments. None of them had an answer for me. How do I resolve this problem? They told me, "Go see the mayor." Well, guess what? I did call the mayor's office. And the mayor's office, as I know as of yesterday, is asking Mike Kanter for a report regarding what's going on in that area. Second, we had a deal, and I'm going to say this openly. Weezer's office, months ago, where Mr. Buscaino, Cedillo, and Price were on that committee regarding the pilot program. I was the gentleman who was opposing that program based on one caveat, that San Vincent Court, which is the oldest dining experience place, it was left out, premeditated by this office. I made concessions. I was given guarantee, a phone call made from Weezer's office to Mr. Kanter, for me to back down. I did back down, for me to have a green light for this project. It is a shame for DeLijani's to play hardball. They want to play hardball with me? Bring it on. This is not right, and it's not going to fly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And after Mr. Agajanian, if we could add Mr. Harrison? You could come forward. And Lawrence Bishop? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Hare Krishna. Last Saturday, at Jack-in-the-Box at West... At Veteran and Santa Monica, a little after 2:00, the assistant manager, Ms. Lena Figueroa, had just pulled into work, as I had pulled in in the parking lot. I greeted her. She gave me a slice of papaya from her tree. Immediately, one of these homeless types came by. She told them, "You're not welcome on the property." This six-foot, 240-pound guy goes right into her face, she being five-foot-one, maybe 110 pounds, and goes into it. I mean, face-to-face. I was witness. These people, whoever they may be, witness. These people, whoever they may be, have been inundating that area for the last year or so. LAPD, nowhere. The employees are, they don't care. There's nothing to be done. They can tell these people, get out of our facility. They laugh at them. Call the police. The customers are like rabbits. They're scared to death. Are they gonna get hurt? You don't know which sociopath, psychopath is gonna come into this store. Unless there's some kind of magic phenomenon where all these people are coming into that particular Jack, Jack in the Box, we have a problem. These people know they can't be put in jail or mental facilities. They know it. It spreads very quickly in their community. Now, I'm a political science major, and I'm a communist. So your democracy here means nothing to me. It's crap. Let me tell you something. You better look up the word anarchy. Even at a low level like this, where property and personal safety is gone through the winds, you're gonna have a problem. Democracy is coming to the USA. The Tribune of the People is on his way.
Thank you. Thank you. If I could get Mr. Harrison, followed by Lawrence Bishop? Should I see Mr. Bishop?
Sifu Kelvin.
Followed by Mr. Herman. Yes, sir.
Okay. Sifu Kelvin Berman Harrison, disciple of Grandmaster Yid Jay, disciple of Grandmaster Takmoon Hong, and student of Grandmaster Steve Sanders. I'm addressing the President of the United States, the Congressional Black Caucus, Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth, Democrats and bipartisan, and my gung-fu teachers that was not aware of the extreme oppression and racism I endured in the torture in San Luis Obispo, California. Your Majesty, many times, many years, I wrote you, informed you of racism in San Luis Obispo, but I get you never got it because of Interpol. Also, Pastor Jesse DePlantis, I faxed you many years daily of situations. You never responded. Pastor Crefflo Dollar, I sold well and heavily into your ministry, and you never wrote letters to me or never helped me and my family as well. You did nothing. Bishop TD Jakes, I sold heavily into your ministry for years. You never responded to me and nothing, dealing with the truths of death threats by certain law enforcement, Aryan and Nazi mentality, generational family members in San Luis Obispo, California. City Hall, one week ago, 2014, here, my bike was stolen right outside of City Hall, as I attended, attended the city council meetings. When I was married, I was accused by Anna Love and Pam Becker that I had sexually harassed a developing a disabled patient that I cared for in San Luis Obispo. Lynette Hamilton was my wife, and she agreed to this, that this was the truth. Afterwards, I was then asked to be supervisor in this place. In San Luis Obispo, California, also, when I was married, I was told by law enforcement that I could not jog in the town with my shirt off. My wife is witness to this as well. Also, my daughter was statutory raped at 13 years, 21 years old, by an individual. And the mayor and city council members did nothing in San Luis Obispo. I was exposed to asbestos and lead, and I was made to work at Cal Poly to clean up the debris for three days straight, and nothing was never done. And all of this is on record. And individuals continue to set me up and so forth. And I will continue more again next week. Thank you for the record.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. And before you come forward, Ms. Bishop, let me apologize to you on Channel 35 for just glancing at your card and, and, and definitely calling you outside of your name. So why don't you come forward? Please accept my apology. And the, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. My name is actually Minister Lorraine Bishop. I'm a member of Morsure Word Training Center Church. And I came to address the council this morning because the church is planning a prayer walk in each of your districts. We think that is necessary. And so we want to apprise you of what is gonna be happening since you preside there. There will be exactly 20 people in each of your districts, and we want to target your core areas. You can reach me at reposessedeland@gmail.com. You can give me your core areas. If I have a phone number where I can reach you, and you can tell me something about the congregations in your area, I can contact them, and we can get this underway. Our target date is June 7, 2014. And we will present an agenda where we have a meeting with these people, with these congregations. We want to have a smaller number, according to Judges 1 versus, Judges 7 versus 1 through 7, which considers 300 as a Gideon's army. And we want to adhere to 1 Corinthians 14:40, which is let us do all things decent and in order. So if any one of you is interested, please contact me at reposessedeland@gmail.com. Give me your comments. We need your core area, and we need to proceed the prayer walk from there. Thank you very much.
Now, thank you. Thank you, Candido. No applause. Mr. Herman, followed by Mr. Akala.
The war on treason is here in Los Angeles. As you all heard about the scandals, the corruption, the fraud, and the waste and abuse of legislators who failed to be competent in their jobs. Nothing in the world is more dangerous than sincere ignorance, ignorance on behalf of legislation that take advantage of you, the public. We advocate on your behalf because we know the reality of this war, the war of corruption. The war has brought you treason. Ms. Montgomery, on item 1A, she stepped away now, owes $2,379.30 at 8514 South Avalon Boulevard, but she was deferred. Ms. Montgomery was insulted by your actions of the lien. How many more liens do you wish to put upon the public? This is another waste and fraud, extortion at its worst, at a time of a recession that continues to be stagnant, very stagnant, that there are no jobs. Because if there was job creation in Los Angeles, all of you that want to make a business in LA, stay away, stay away. Because the crime, the murders, and the TSA's that steal our luggage is nonsense. And you gotta do a lot more for our safety. Public interest should be your priority in this horseshoe. I don't come in here to scream and yell at you. I come in here to get my point across, because I can't be so sincere to speak to you one-on-one, Herman. So take a lesson from Mr. Peabody Herman here. Because Sherman, Mr. Peabody is on topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Akala.
Okay, you pretty much know what I'm gonna talk about. You're a bunch of dickheads, but I can't be calling you that anymore, because I'm running for mayor in three years. And I need to be politically correct. So I cannot call you assholes, or dickheads, or, you know, all those things that people call the other people. We talk like the people, but I gotta start talking like a politician. Equality for all. Our beautiful city, even though our whole city is full of shit, like... And then she blames it on the Mexicans. The Mexicans are the cleanest people, cleaning all the shit for all of you. So she's full of shit, too. Anyway, what I, I'm here to tell you is, we need housing for everyone. Read my book, you stupid idiots, and absorb it, and execute it. Because if we create a system where everybody has a place to live without paying rent and liens to the city, we will all have a very nice society. And we don't need no skyscrapers.
No applause.
We need a place where everybody has a place to live independently, where they can grow their own veggies, vegetables. And I don't know what that Krishna guy was doing here. What's he doing in a Jack in the Box if he's a vegetarian? Isn't that stupid? To hang out in a Jack in the Box when you're a Krishna guy? Stupid.
Okay, thank you. And you can pick up your little, your hat. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, that concludes a general public comment for today. Mr. Clerk, that brings us where?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Okay, so it would be time for announcements. Members, a person who's worked for us for years and has taken all of our photos, it's her birthday today. Sheri, happy birthday. Everybody give Sheri a round of applause. Twenty-one years old. Okay, any more announcements? Mr. Sidio? No, Mr. Buscaino?
Yes, thank you. To the hundreds of thousands of viewers on Channel 35, we want to announce an important community briefing on Save Our Streets LA, Wednesday, April 2, here at the John Ferraro Council Chambers. Please join myself, Councilmember Englander, CAO, CLA's mayor's office, for an important briefing on the, on the report that was put out last week. 6:00 here at the John Ferraro Council Chambers. We hope we have a good response in light of, in our, in our continued commitment to sharing the information with the entire city on trying to fix streets and sidewalks in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Englander?
Yes, well, thank you for that. And this Sunday, we're inviting the public out, if they've got a horse or wish to rent one. We've got a ride coming up this Sunday at 1:00 in Chatsworth, where it'll be myself, Ms. Martinez is joining us as well, Mr. Labonge, and our mayor, Eric Garcetti, where we're going on a trail ride and, and discussing the equine community and why it's so important to keep and protect that community, not only in my district, but Mr. Fuentes's district as well.
Okay, Sheri, make sure you're there to take some photos. I want to see how big the horse is that Mr. Englander rides on. Mr. Sidio? I don't want, I don't want him to give you a pony. Mr. Sidio?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm, let me, let me note that it's not every weekend that movies open up in the city, the city of Hollywood and of movie premieres, that a movie premieres that has as its lead character, as its lead characters, Americans of Mexican heritage. And so this week, today, we have the opening of a movie named Caesar Chavez. Caesar Chavez, for whatever you may think of him, was an American of Mexican heritage, of modest background, born in Yuma, Arizona, and in the 1960s became the voice and the moral authority for an effort to organize farm workers in this country. Whatever you may think of the UFW or its development, it's undeniable that in the 1960s, at a time of great change and tumult in our nation, that they were the force of what was right and what was just, in their efforts to make sure that farm workers in the fields were treated justly. We were expecting, and are expecting, the producer of that movie, a young man, a genius named Diego Luna, to join us. Diego Luna is a Mexican, born in Mexico City, parents from the theater. Him and his best friend, Gael Garcia Bernal, are geniuses in the theater and in the cinema. And they have produced this movie. And so you have a very rare, unique, I don't think there's any precedent for this, of a Mexican from Mexico City, successful in cinema and theater, producing a movie about a man of Mexican heritage, an American living in this country. I don't think there's a precedent for that. They're using their resources, their talent. They've got a great cast. Michael Peña, America Ferrera, Rosario Dawson. It's an extraordinary moment. It's too rare. It shouldn't be the case, but it is the case, that we have this movie opening up today. And so I wanted to announce that. Diego Luna will join us shortly. Fortunately, not in time for, for the council to receive him, but will be here soon. And I wanted everybody, those tens and hundreds of thousands watching the show, to take a moment this weekend. It's in theaters throughout Southern California. All the major theater chains have it running. And it starts today at noon, I believe. And it's showing in theaters throughout all of Southern Californians. I encourage our audience to take a moment and look at a very important moment in American history. I thank you.
And, and I think that's a great announcement. You and I and so many others, you know, have been and worked with the farm workers, and it was just a very exciting time for us. But what really makes me proud, what I've heard where it relates to this movie, is that the actors felt so, that it was so important that this story be told. I don't think any of them received any pay. Or it was like expenses. This, this was a story that they wanted to make sure that people saw. So I, along with Mr. Sidio and others, invite everyone to go see this movie. Any more announcements? If we could all rise for journey motions, everyone in the chambers, please rise. I will first look to Ms. Martinez's side to see if there are any journey motions. It doesn't appear to be any. I'll now look to Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Englander, did you have?
Unfortunately, I do. Thank you. Council members, yesterday, two firefighters from Fire Station 96 and 107 suffered injuries battling a fire at a two-story apartment building in Chatsworth. The incident is a reminder of the brave men and women who put themselves in danger day in and day out to keep us safe. I'd like to send our heart and our condolences on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, the Los Angeles Fire Department, and the United Firefighters of Los Angeles City to Boston Fire Department and the families of the two firefighters lost in the line of duty on Wednesday. The Boston Fire Department mourns the deaths of two firefighters, Lieutenant Edward Walsh and firefighter Michael Kennedy. Lieutenant Edward Walsh was 43 years old with almost a decade of experience serving the Boston Fire Department. Lieutenant Walsh follows a long family tradition of service, as his late father and uncle served on the Watertown Fire Department, and his cousin Tom is currently a captain there. Lieutenant Walsh leaves behind his wife and three young children. Firefighter Michael Kennedy was only 33 years old, a Marine Corps Iraqi combat veteran. With six years of experience with the Boston Fire Department, he was one of the first responders, in fact, who rushed to treat victims of the Boston Marathon bombing. Firefighter Kennedy spent his days off roaring down the road on his motorcycle and pushing himself and his colleagues to the limits as a CrossFit trainer. The fire, which took these two brave men's lives and injured 13 other firefighters, several other police officers, as they responded to a four-story apartment building fire at the Back Bay District. Engine 33, ladder 15, was one of the first on the scene. Lieutenant Walsh and firefighter Kennedy, as they responded to the fire in the basement of the building, soon realized the danger of this dramatic situation. With the fire blazing all around them, two minutes into the building, they sent out a rare mayday call, letting their colleagues know that the situation had gotten dire and that they were, in fact, trapped. A few minutes later, as outsiders observed, a huge explosion, flames leapt through the windows. A huge backdraft from a blown-out window sent flames hurling towards Lieutenant Walsh and firefighter Kennedy. The fire pronounced, produced a cloud of black smoke so dense, the only visible thing was the red flashing lights on the responding firefight, fire trucks. Kennedy was found 30 minutes after the fire began, was pulled from the building, and was pronounced at the hospital. Walsh's body was recovered hours later, with firefighters unable to access the basement, which was still red hot from the 45 mile-per-hour wind and fuel flames. Once contained, Lieutenant Walsh was lit, was later carried on a stretcher out the back of the building through the line of saluting firefighters. His body was wrapped in a black cloth. Firefighters all around the country all mourn, as many work together in solidarity through mutual aid. Over the years, UFLAC has built up a very close relationship with firefighters in Boston, so the news was particularly tragic. Representatives from the board will be traveling to the funeral to pay respects on behalf of the Los Angeles Fire Department and the entire city family. These terrible tragedies reinforce how we must be grateful each and every day for those who sacrifice in the line of duty to keep us all safe. May our hearts be with them. May they rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Any more journeying motions? Mr. Sidio?
Yes, Frank Hernandez was a World War II veteran, a participant in the Normandy invasion. He was wounded, spent a week in a foxhole during that invasion. Later, when he returned home from the war, he received the Purple Heart Medal of Honor, came back to Bar Heights, where he became a homeowner. And then after that, moved up to Mount Washington, where he lived for 40 years. He was a fiercely independent man. He passed at 89 years. He was a man that, once he couldn't drive anymore, he started just walking the hills of Mount Washington, visiting his neighbors. He was the type of man who didn't believe programs like Meals on Wheels and all these other programs we do were, were for people like him. And you can imagine with his history, how he felt so fiercely independent. He was, he just passed recently, and he was a true warrior in every sense of the world and a great neighbor for all those in Mount Washington. And may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Sidio. Members, this meeting is adjourned.